You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the February 11th meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
I am on the meeting order. Samantha, put the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, all. Hey, Rich, okay, all right. John, as soon as you are ready, we will do the roll, please. You're ready to go, Tim.
Reporting in progress.
President Stein, please. President. Samantha Arnn.
She is stats that we emotionally.
President.
Okay, Sam Paxton. Rich Young.
I'm here.
I'm here. Brad Gamske.
I am here.
Fire Chief Gary Hendrix.
Present.
Police Chief Mark Switzer.
Present.
Director of President Jane Paxton.
She won't be there.
No.
Not present.
BZA President, he's absent. The Building Commissioner, Code of Work and Officer Brian Alexander.
Present.
And Flood Plan Administrator, Ray Numries, he's absent. Fine Permission President, I example, fifty thousand.
He is not on.
Bob Denver, this is here, so we're coming, I'm absent. Rural Commissioner Bob Sukowski.
Present.
And Samantha Arnn from Website Technology, she is absent. All right, thank you, John. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda revised, you know, the few little changes that I put in? If so, when did the Rich schedule the agenda? Roll your today, they can set for you.
We're not sure. I don't have a revised agenda.
Okay, all right. I need a motion, are you making a motion off of the group? Or does anybody have any questions? I'm sorry. You're talking about changing the agenda? No, I said, in the afternoon, I sent a revised agenda. Today's afternoon? Yes. I shall my afternoon. You did or you did not? Did not. Okay, here we go, here's one for you, gentlemen. Here we go, that's for you, and pass this on to Rich, please. Okay, I thought you might be on. Okay, there were just very small, there were a couple things that I changed. So council members, if there are any questions or changes? Is this one in the post-gender? What do you mean? Where? Post-gender. Oh, but I sent it yesterday, or no, I sent that on Sunday, or something. You sent this one today. The, the, I opposed, yes, the revised. The revised. Okay, but as long as we had an agenda there, I mean, the only revision, there are very few revisions, okay? Okay, you want to give them revision? I gave you the new one, so the new one now has everything on it. I know. Oh. Would you please summarize it so that people who are watching this, or if they've wanted in the future, they know what's on here? I believe that the big change was that I added under appointments and commissions liaison positions. Okay, then Matt Bowen agreed to continue with the ABC. The new flood administrator is listed, park board or place that is listed there. I just named the park board and I was hoping that park was going to maintain with the police and fire liaison. Okay, so anyway, that's the big, that's the big change. Okay, that's the big change. Okay? Everything else is the same. Thank you for doing. Okay? All right. So, any questions? Changes? No?
How am I to approve the latest agenda?
Okay, the revised agenda, okay. So Ralph Fox?
Second.
Okay, Sam Paxton, seconds, and all in favor today by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, four. So that means all of us that approved the revised agenda.
John Isaac has joined us online.
Oh, yeah, thank you. All these small people participating. Oh, can we even, it's not long, that is 25. Okay. All these virtual. All right, the minutes, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? There were two sets, one from the January, I think, not January, I think it was January 14th meeting, wasn't it? January 14th, and one for January 17th. All right, so see, we did need to do it after 17th, I didn't get that. Okay, so everybody had a chance to review both sets of, let's review the minutes of the 14th. And you have January 22, 24, I think. Yes, 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 I already talked it off in my, so I, I apologize. Okay, if I have everything else, I can, okay. So, were there any additions or corrections to the minutes? I have Samantha Sun-John, a couple of points. Right, and then I answered her because during the meeting, I believe that when we were doing something with the board in the commission meeting, that you need their report, and when they, Sukowski started talking about the truck, and you said you had that mark on the meeting, and Samantha thought I should change that, what, the report, it's been recorded at one, at the end of the meeting, one, you had comments. Okay. And I missed everything that was said, I just went through. Yeah, but saying, I mentioned exploring for just a minute of truck, I did go through the whole. I think that was, she made a comment where we were talking about schedules for the next year, so I'll give it. Right, but that wasn't covered in the goal, I know, of the meeting, okay, and it was one something that I mentioned about the truck. Okay, all right, any other comments? Or are the minutes, who is ready to approve?
It's hard to make any changes.
No, that's what I'm asking, does anybody have any changes to make? Okay, okay. Rich, did you have a chance to take a look at those?
Yeah, I did. It says on this agenda, 2024.
Yeah, I just changed that, I'm sorry. Yeah, all right, and John, please change that, that's for the agenda. No, we're looking at the meeting minutes right now, so. So if there are no other, I'm just looking at, are you good? Okay, so if there are no other corrections or additions to the minutes, I need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, that's right.
Okay, so that's Sam Paxton, I need a second. Okay, so Rich Young, seconds, to approve the minutes of the January 14th meeting, all in favor today by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all in favor? All right, so now let's move on to the minutes of the January 17th meeting. Okay, all right, this was about the, this was the Zoom meeting for, where we discussed the, our community assistance grant application of the streets. We did not make any final decisions at that meeting, but it was, anything to add or miss?
I'm making a motion to approve the last minutes.
Okay, very good, Ralph Fox, move to approve, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, Sam Paxton, seconds, all in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, four ayes, and these minutes have been approved, thank you very much. Would you be, I think you can hold the, how many did I give you? From here? Yeah. I'm not sure, we've got one, two. That, one, no, I have to stay on the side. Yeah, okay, one, two, three, this is all, just the first one, I don't have a second. There are two copies in here, this is mine, the one I. Okay, that was mine, it's still on there. Okay, yes, this one's mine, okay, all right. So all in favor, all, Sam Paxton, oh, no, Ralph Fox moved to approve the minutes of the 17th, Sam Paxton seconded them, and all, all voted in favor. Over you, okay? Yes, and that was for the, okay, so he, okay, all right, thank you. I'll just, I'll sign this as well, all right. Reports from committees, officers, clerk, treasurer, Joan, the invoices, complaints, please. Okay. We have the list, no one. January 31st with additional vouchers, and a total of 2,454, I believe, instead, handled by, I think, council members, copy of it, and a copy of Rich's copy. Any questions on the vouchers for that? Okay, if not, then if there are no questions or corrections on that, then I ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the vouchers of Brent.
Okay, so that was January additional, Sam Paxton moved to approve, Sam Fox seconded it, all in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, four ayes have approved, and you guys can sign those. All right, and then, down to the next. Moving on to the next one, February 11 vouchers, and a grand total of 23,506 grand dollars. You want a red? No, I think we see the one, it was standard, but correct. Yeah, I don't have any questions. Okay. Any other questions, two, from anyone else? Council members, no? Okay. Then, in that case, I will ask for a motion to approve the vouchers of February 11th.
Make a motion to approve the vouchers, I see, and move second.
Okay, Sam Paxton has moved, Ralph Fox seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, four ayes, and these vouchers have been approved. Okay, can I ask more, please? I have payroll, January 31st payroll, number 1,515,18 cents, and I did not send that out the, even read the copy. Okay, could you repeat the sum again for me, Joan, because I didn't read yours. 1,515,18 cents. All right, thank you. Okay. All right, are there any questions about that, these are payroll taxes and so forth? No, okay, if not, then I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Ralph Fox moved, I need a second.
Second.
Sam Paxton, seconds, all in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the motion as fast as been approved, okay? Okay, then I have another one.
Oh, one more?
I have one for payroll taxes for January. Okay, oh, this one was an actual fair, not payroll taxes, the first one. Yes, yes, okay. Yes, this one was paid. Transfer and right. Yep, I see, okay. And this is, again, for January, and it's 499,177 cents, okay? Okay, so that one was payroll, this one is payroll taxes. Right. Correct? Taxes are paid, 515,18, paid. Okay, all right, any questions about, since that was payroll, these are payroll taxes, any questions regarding payroll, take a look at, we'll pass it over, and if you have questions, John? Right, if you have questions, I can answer, thank you. No, okay, get any support. All right, we'll just send them along, so they can take a look at them. Okay, would you like to look at first or not? You don't need to, for the payroll taxes? You're good? Okay, fine, thank you. All right, so then, all in favor, I need a, I need, I need a motion to approve the payroll taxes.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, Sam Paxton, move, okay, I need a second. I think you and Rich said at the same time, so Rich, I'll move it this time. Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, four ayes, and these have been approved. Okay, I'm gonna sign these, because they're payroll taxes. I have another question, closing term about the year, payroll taxes for November 30th, or so when? Payroll taxes for November 30th last year. Okay. That was just for the one employee, 213,176 cents, and that was paid in December, I don't know how it is getting up to here. All right, any questions? All right, if not, if no questions, then I need a motion to approve these payroll taxes.
How am I to?
All right, Ralph Fox, move, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, Sam Paxton, second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so all four agree. Okay, thanks, okay, thank you, John. All right, guys, good to work. All right, thank, is it, anymore, are we done? That's it? All right, okay, enough, thank you very much. Well, we know where to learn. All right, good, thank you. All right, so let's go down to appointments to boards of commissions and liaison positions. Matt Bowen has agreed to continue staying on the advisory plan commission of the town. Matt has been the representative from the town, the Gulf's duty, BZA, so he has expressed an interest in doing that going forward, and to representing the plan commission and the BZA. So he has, you know, agreed to stay out of those in that particular position. The new flood plan administrator is going is Andrew Bertikini, as far as I'm concerned. Are you gentlemen, you know, agree and approve that Andrew take that position? Okay, all right, well then, you know, I have appointed then Andrew Bertikini as our flood plan administrator, he is a member of the plan commission. Now regarding the park board's, Dominic or Skip Muffler's position would have ended as the end of 2024, and he has expressed an interest in remaining on the park board and continuing with the work for the next four years. So I recommend that we keep him on and appoint him to the park board. So, all right, so that would be Dominic Muffler. Now Ralph has agreed to stay on, to continue as the police and fire department liaison for the town council, and Samantha Arnn has agreed to stay on as the park board liaison. So those are the positions that I, you know, just made it to finish up for this particular year, 2025. Let's move on now to the departmental reports, police chief, Swissick. Oh, I'm sorry, just a minute. Yeah. You didn't stay what year, are they moved back? Matt, Matt Bowen is going to be on until February 27th, until 28, 2028. And Skip Muffler? And Skip Muffler is also 2028. Okay, and then no turn for the, no, okay? Yes, all right, so now let's move on to departmental reports, police chief, Martin Swissick, please.
Good evening, for the month of January, the police department responded to 350 calls for service, when compared to 176 in the previous year for an increase of 174 calls. During the month of January, 14 incident reports were documented, a total of nine individuals were arrested, four misdemeanor arrests for operating motor vehicle with a suspended driver's license, three misdemeanor arrests for operating motor vehicle without ever receiving a driver's license, and two warrant arrests were also made during the month. Aside from that, we had about a 10-day run of some extreme cold, and something major to report.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the police chief? No? Okay, thank you. Our fire department, and fire chief, Gary Metz.
For the month of January, we spent 153.51 hours on everything. During the month, we had 12 calls, we had two of Michigan shores, one on, one floor was calling as a burning violation, we investigated, they were finding there burning wood in their fire pit, so it was, next door, maybe, thought it was burning, but it's left. And then we had medical call on 118 over on Palm Happen, gentleman's health, and we are helping with us, so. Also, we would like to thank everybody who donated towards Lucas Machine, we raised enough money, they said it would be four to six weeks, sitting in my office, and we will be training tomorrow, and hopefully, depending on the weather, the gentleman will be coming out of Grand Rapids to teach us on the use of the, so, other than that, thank everybody that donated for that, so it'll be on the break as soon as we get trained.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Gene. Building commissioner, Brian Alexander.
Okay, I think we're going to be spot here, and I'll say, no, updated, show term into the report.
Thank you.
Excellent. I followed up on the call that you mentioned about the fire pit fire. The resident called me and said that she was concerned because it fired outside, it might be similar to what would happen on California, and so I called that, the person responsible, who owned the fire pit, and I communicated to her all, all requirements of the fire pit, that you're only clean, only clean wood, no, no rubbish can be disposed of, and all the other regulations.
Thank you.
And so I, there was understanding that she, she knew all the requirements, and I passed that information along to the surgeon, who voiced the concern.
Okay, impressive, thank you, John. Thank you. All right, anything else about these reports, anything in particular to point out? Our building permits is open, nothing?
Well, I, I went over to, to take the road, to inspect the sheds that's there, and it was built according to the plans, it's followed by 24 with seven foot height, and seems smaller, I guess that's just because the lot is so big, but it's the correct size, that it's the type location, and there's no issue with it.
All right, excellent, awesome, thank you.
Frank, I, maybe you're aware of this, but on here, it says there's a resident lucky to get a common customer approval for their special use variation, variants are at 14 Palhatte. Has that been scheduled, have you communicated with the person, resident or?
They haven't, they haven't.
Well, this is an old one, late of all of us.
Yes, come four years ago. They, they got the SCA approval, but they never brought it forth through the town council. And I haven't talked to Matt directly about it, but it was my understanding that.
Okay, yeah, because I knew.
They voided, because it had been three years and they hadn't done anything.
They, they basically do long-term rentals.
Well, she rents out long-term, so she's.
I, I thought this was, had just fallen back on you.
No, no, same, same thing, but, you know, glad you asked about it, so, okay. If there are no other questions, thank you very much, Brian, again, for the report, and, and John does post this up on our window at the front of the office here, so anybody who is watching would like to see the locations, all the addresses released. Okay, there is no park board report, because they have not been meeting, the next meeting of the park board is going to take place in March. Rural commissioner, Sukowski, please.
Total of 35 hours, month of January, and all of it had to do with the snow removal or, so.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Advisory plan commission, Isaac, is there something you'd like to add?
Yeah, no, we continue working on the trade ordinance, we wish already, have something for you, I guess, to review in April.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Any questions to the ABC, nothing? Okay, all right, thank you very much. There is no report from Matt Bowen, so I will move on to give news on the white ditch drainage board. So this morning, I attended a meeting, and of course, as I said, I believe Westmore already, the drainage board has made a decision to do a cleanup in Michiana Shores, in the three sections that they are currently handling, our portal to, no, Pocahontas, to the Michigan Line, our portal to Pocahontas, and then the Oakdale to our portal stretches. So it's going to be, I guess, a pretty good deep clean and stuff, and I became very concerned when I was at the meeting already earlier, with regards to hearing that they were planning on removing the silt and placing it up on where the plant, where our, our walking path currently is. So that would add extra work to, you know, the whole town and destroy, goodness, you know, I mean, I don't know what else they would do with regards to that, so I spoke with Brad about this, and Brad suggested that we request to hold a workshop with the drainage board, so that they would be able to actually listen and hear, you know, the concerns, the town has, the citizens have, the park board would have, and so forth. So we are going to be holding a workshop next month, an hour before the regular town council meeting takes place, so that will be March 11th at 6:00 PM. I will ask as many people as possible who are interested in this to be present at this, you know, at that 6 o'clock, don't wait until just 7 o'clock to come with me, but so that we can discuss this. John has found all the various different documents that refer to the work that has been done, showing, you know, how best the town is, and all the work that has been done, agreements with the DNR and so forth, with regards to that map, to help us sort of explain, you know, why it's so important to us in the community. So Brad, is there anything else to add on that?
Just the project is scheduled for later in the year, but we wanted to get ahead of this, and especially with concerns that may come from the public here, this is an opportunity, the boards, the board members are going to come here.
Yeah.
So they're, they're coming that evening, the contractor's going to be here as well, it'll be the opportunity for the town to voice their concerns well ahead of time, so that appropriate, whatever arrangements can be made when the project actually is done.
Right, because the project is right now planned for fall, winter.
Yeah.
Right, is what they're saying, so we have to go later in the fall.
Yeah.
Of this year, '25, to maybe, we'll get into '26, what else?
And the contract was awarded, and it was awarded to the same contractor who did the work most recently.
The awesome company.
Right, they're familiar with it, but they will have a representative here as well.
Yes.
Not necessarily, it won't be a question and answer type with the contractor, more just to hear the concerns from the community.
All right, you have any questions on that, or is that pretty much, okay, anyway, but it would be very good if we took a look at the documentation John has, we can't take that out of the office, and I agree, because those are the counties, but, you know, come in sometime, and, you know, when John is in the office, and sit down and take a look at some of them, you know, the stuff that's in there, so that make sure, I know I'm going to come into, because I'm going to be able to be prepared before we have this, take place with them. Okay, so website, Samantha, wrote an email, I think, can someone pull it up on their phone and read the, okay, I think she sent a text, I'm not even sure, text or email?
She sent.
She did send something, okay? Since I've been talking, maybe, what have you done? I think she said that we already have, what was it?
I mean, it's not true.
When? So, Michigan shores, in, so now it's under the DNR domain. You know, we should be using that with our, sign and tell so?
No.
No.
It's just for what?
Just for the website.
That's what it was, yeah. We haven't changed, we haven't established, I don't get it, you know, email address, or anything like that, there's a lot of the men.
Okay. Okay. Are you do, okay? That's basically, she said, in addition to the web report, it's going to be an email, I was also planning to report that our website is now dot gov, website being URL, it's going to be on Michigan shores, in, in, go, go, and then she further states that she's also in the process of getting pricing on email and slash collaboration services through Gmail or Microsoft Office.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that would be Samantha's report, she did send out an electronic report, I assume, Julie already got it, so I don't get that.
I just got a, anything else?
No, no, it's okay, all right, okay, so there's something from home. Pardon?
I said Dennis Wood.
Okay, so I do not have anything near the report on, from her seat, since the last time. Let's see, unfinished business now. Justice report, the town, the engineering firm that we had hired completed all the work, or filling out. work on, or filling out the application for the town. So Jeanette Hicks, who presented to us, if anybody remembers, she was on, on line for the town. She actually did a presentation to, that presentation, she worked with Joan. They spent a couple of days here, maybe even more than a couple of days, a few days, working to file the application because the state was so inundated with people fighting that they were having some kind of glitches up there and that it took numerous days to get all the job done. But the application was filed. So, you know, we're happy that that's, you know, and talked away. Now, under new business, you know, we were setting some priority goals for twenty twenty-five. I will not go over them in my turn.
Can I just?
Oh, sure.
Add to the C C.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to publicly talk about, there's a bill down in the House of Representatives in the state of Indiana, H B one, four, six, one. That is apparently intending to make changes to the community crossings grant program. And the changes that they're discussing, proposing would require that every community that qualifies for a grant also have a wheel tax in place. And according to Susan Cowan at Big utility, she indicated that the minimum requirement for, to, in order to levy a mail tax in a community is to have five thousand residents, which are only four thousand seven hundred and so much short. So if the rule goes into law, we would be left out of any future community crossing grant funds. So as part of, I think the town council, it's in our best interest in trying to get as much contact with the state representatives on another matter around S P one, which is property tax legislation proposed by the governor. I also included in an email to the committee that was tasked, the Senate committee, that was tasked to review and mark up the property tax bill. But I also included how the negative impact H B fourteen sixty-one is going to have probably much more significant impact, negative impact for us to sort of pregone out matching grant program. So I don't know what we can do in organized fashion, try to get our residents to contact our representatives at, represent us here. We have two practical senators assigned to us, I guess, two representatives in the House as well, the two districts of Michigan shores.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sam. That is important and I think that we should reach out to our residents, you know, to voice their concern as well, that, you know, we may not be able to handle the streets if, you know, we lose laws. So I think that we should try to do that. I think it's going to be very important so, you know, to get that done. Thank you. So anyway, we spoke about the priority goals last time around and I didn't list them again here, you know, because I know that we talked about several of them. So I just wondered whether anybody wanted to bring up more of, you know, what we talked about, should we add anything else to our last month's list?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, because we had codification in town code sustaining nuisance complaints, addressing dead fallen leaves on private property easements, need to assess the fallen leaves, trees, leaves and debris, you know, that have come down. Okay, so, all right, nothing else. So then, you know, we're going to move on to the next item. B, proposed purchase of a new truck for the town. Turns out that our truck is just a huge, you know, money bit at this point and that we're going to have to move into doing something else. So having noted a few, you know, things, we have a great spreadsheet was put together by Nick Sokowski with his dad and then Sam was working with them on trying to figure out what to do. So this is going to be something really huge for us, but it looks like this is probably what we're going to need. It looks like this is something we need to do. So I would like to pass this over to Sam to present together with Sokowski. So, thank you.
Okay, through the efforts of Bob and Nick Sokowski, which we appreciate and applaud, we have received four pricing bids on a light, light vehicle. All four of them were Ford five, three out of the four were Ford F five fifties. The third, the last one was a Ford F four fifty. The big issue that we have with the existing truck, other than mechanical things, is that the rust is taking over the vehicle and it's a risk picking the vehicle out of, as it in its current condition. So the option to have a stainless steel bed, which will prevent corrosion from the salt eating away on the truck is a must have. Three out of the four responses on the bids, we see had stainless steel beds. There's a matrix going around for everyone. I guess we can make this public if, if need be. But the winning vote that the road committee, road commissioner and Jake advocated for was the truck available at Bryan Baker Ford in Plainfield, Illinois. We found out earlier today that that vehicle is no longer available, it's sold. That moves us down to quote number one Sutton Ford located in Madison, Illinois. It's a twenty twenty-four new stainless steel bed. It does not have a strobe light package, but the conversation with Nick and Bob earlier today, they felt like five hundred dollars would be a reasonable price at the lights and you guys would be able to do the work possibly. All right, so we again had a meet earlier, last week, I guess, I had a conversation here with Susan Cowan, talking, wanting to get her advice based upon our financial condition on how we would fund the purchase. And she cautioned that the town, year to year, is close to budget, sometimes at budget, sometimes a little bit above, but often below. We're spending more money when our, our revenue intake is, it's not a good position for any, any town being. We have very little levers to control any type of revenue increases. So we're, we're kind of, we are where we're at. She indicated that we are on reserves available, that we could scratch a check and pay for it and would full, almost fully deplete the self-help tower fund and complete, in completion and leave the town with very little in the way of reserves. So I asked her about the Indian bond bank program, which is a lease buy or lease on loan program. We had briefly talked about that in conjunction with purchase of a flame loan last year or the year before and, I guess it was last year. And I think if you compare it to a young family starting out and buying a home and have all the other expenses of a family and then all of a sudden a car breaks down and they not save some money, college fund here, emergency fund, if they spend it, it depletes most of it. It's somewhat the American way, I guess, to, you know, utilize financing where needed and where, where it makes sense and not go out and run a credit card bills. We're not doing that here. We're going out and buying a, a tool that will live for a long time, maybe more than some of us sitting here. And it just, I think it's time that we seriously take a look at, rather than, I feel very nervous about spending this amount of money and depleting all the ten or fifteen thousand dollars of that fund. I know it's, it's debt, but there are such things as good debt and bad debt. And this is, in my opinion, good debt.
Other council members?
So Sam, have you done any, we had a conversation with Susan that she discussed how we could finance, what are the rules for how to handle this?
I didn't, the other thing I wanted to bring up is earlier today, there was emails going around about potential petition for the USDA grant program for, can't remember it's rural, something around here, they have a program and in the past have been able to, in fact, someone, another community indicated in on the email was that they were able to purchase a truck and a marshal vehicle for their marshal through this grant program. So Sue, thanks again, I can't, thanks Susan Cowan for being such a great resource for us. She provided us with the USDA contact list and I started off, I called into Knox office and we do fall into that region. But she transferred me to the gentleman by the name of Craig McGowan, who is based in Jasper, Indiana, the southern end of the state and who handles the grants. He, he said that in the past, in the normal year, that they usually have about twenty-five million dollars in funds from the federal government that would fund grants for, for rural communities, small communities in the state. Last year, they only got five million. And he said it's kind of a very uncertain with everything that's happening with the, with the government today and the freezing of grant money and the explore issue, the evaluation of grant, various grant programs through all these government agencies that are out there. So he was not overly confident that there would be funds once the budget is finalized and he has it to be in March. He said we could check back at the end of March, but he's kind of hesitant to think that there would be based on what's going on. So I took the liberty of drafting a resolution. Does any of the other council member, do you guys have any, anything involved in that?
Questions or something?
Rich, what, what about the old truck? Are we going to sell that?
Yeah, we'll advertise it as the S P O A's guy ones. I'll take pictures of it, we'll set it out here and people can get it and think the minimum bid that would put on is probably ten thousand and go out from there.
Is that with the plow?
That's everything.
And wasn't there a discussion a couple of years ago that maybe nursery would help? Maybe could help? Was it you talking about that or?
Because, you know, it's a, you know, they do provide funds. It's a longer process of applying for this and it's been targeted to the bigger communities, you know, that have done this. We're, I'm talking rural, but we are, you know, we're talking big cities that are, whatever these guys are using, you know, money, they're bigger, you know, and they're providing things like buses, they're providing, I think some of the machinery, I mean, some of the vehicles could be in the work trucks to refuse removals and stuff like that. And it is a grant program. They, what that was not mentioned right now, this, you know, at this point in time, because they send out, you know, different kind of proposals. So I guess we could look into that, but that's certainly not a quick, you know, kind of fix. It's not something we can answer to, you know, within a couple of months. This is something that takes longer.
We have contact yet?
Yeah, I go to the nursery all the time, you know, on, on that commission and I can find out, I can reach out, actually I'll take a look at the materials, you know, we got nothing had to do with that kind of material, but unless chief knows anything about it, chief sister, have you heard anything new? John, we just, now, you know, a justification that this is what they're working on. So they're not working on anything like that now. But I would ask, you know, to see what's going on. I'm on a, on a different commission other day, point everybody to think the work.
I think we got the terminals to be great type thing.
Oh, absolutely.
I think I do.
Absolutely.
And if we need help, we can always contact the county of Long Beach or someone else if I could put it together. If our equipment won't stick for another couple of months through winter, I'm sure we could get help from one of the other communities around here.
Well, I know.
If we could get something for free or only pay a small portion of it, it sure would help our budget.
Yes, I am.
I know you want it immediately. I mean, that's typical.
Well, if our truck is not working and not functional for us to do that kind of work right now, we have enough machinery to, we have to use a small vehicle. So I think that the group is concerned about making sure we work on this because if we keep putting it off, we are going to keep putting it off and not make a decision because we just sit on it. So I think we have to make some kind of a decision. Are we going to pursue something now or not? We've got a lot of work that was put in. So I think that, you know, we, if something, you know, we can always reach out to somebody to see about help, but we can't count on that as our solution to the problem or whatever. Yes, chief?
I'll just add to Sam's point about the first truck we were looking at has already been sold. Last summer, we purchased the twenty twenty-four F five fifty for the town of Long Beach. We will not receive that truck until possibly July or August of this year. It's very fortunate that you found some trucks that are out there that have the stainless steel beds because we ordered one with a stainless steel bed. We're in the same position, our truck was in need of replacement. It just shows that the longer you wait, it's going to take a longer lead time to try and find a replacement. We were hoping we would have our new truck for this plowing season. Unfortunately, we will not see that truck until August of this year. And we spent approximately a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars on our purchase. So just to kind of like compare numbers.
That this is the right.
Yeah, so you guys are getting a pretty good price for what you're looking at.
I think, I think that we just, I think that when we, you know, if we're doing something, we need to make some kind of initial, we need to make a decision on going forward with something or not. And then we need to, after that, then we work on the different kind of financing that we can do. Is there a way, I mean, how much that has to be put down on the, is there any way to, you know, hold this truck for us? I mean, you know, is, you know, doing foot in, so let's work, let's make some kind of a decision on yea or nay, I'll take that, you know, right now and then worry about the financing and what we can do. Gary, you can say something else?
I was going to say something, go talk to Horizon Bank. We got the one on our fire engine. It was like two point five percent, but that was before the interest rates went up. And it's a ten year loan, but it gets redone in five years, the interest rate. So it's going to go up. We know it's going to go up.
What bank did you say?
Horizon.
On Horizon.
Horizon is part of the Indiana Bond Bank Program.
Oh, it is?
Oh, they just walk through the state and they connect you to eight different lenders that they have.
All right.
If you're, want to make sure you can get this truck and say, why don't we do a lease purchase, why don't we do a lease purchase for a year and then work on this other stuff that we need and we want to see if we can get a grant to pay for? Because we're already there.
I will explore, give me the nursery people, I'll, I'll call you in, okay? I'll inquire to, to the complexity, how long it's going to take, to whether or not there is even funds available for this type of purchase for our community.
I mean, grant.
Part, yeah.
The grant, you're telling me that. What about lease purchase? We can't get. We can't get, we can't get anything now.
This program is a lease purchase. I don't know if there's an early termination possibility. I would assume most loans.
Well, that's something we have to work with the dealer, don't we, when it comes to the lease purchase?
We can go directly to Horizon Bank. We can do all, all different types of things. We can be very flexible.
Because a lease purchase, you would get the vehicle now.
That's what I, that's what we, we want.
You want your vehicle now?
The Indiana Bond.
And they can get it to you now and can work on getting finances from grants? From grants that would let the grant people know we have good intentions of.
Well, the thing that I wanted to first ask him, and I'll go back to the USDA, because what if there are funds available in March? Can we do it post-purchase? Can we go back to them and apply for a grant from people that we just purchased? Okay, I will ask that, I will contact NERC. If there are others that are out there, I'll, but I do not want to get into the situation where we're gonna rely on Long Beach. And I've already talked to Chief Suster at your recommendation about exploring whether or not they would be interested. And Chief said, unfortunately not, that they are.
Well, help the county, the county comes right over here.
Tell me who's probably, tell me who's.
I mean, they share the same boundary. They come into the Shanna shores and turn around the board.
Well, I'm in favor of approving, moving forward and working out the financing as we move forward. I like John's idea. Something we get on the book right away and then figure out other options longer term. But I don't wanna wait any longer. Bob and I have been talking about this literally for years. Sam's been almost with you guys, we are really close. We delayed, we've had some conversation, Hannah's completed that later, six months ago.
Yeah, that works, that's amazing.
The truck that we really wanted because of the rent, sold yesterday.
Yeah.
This other truck that we had ordered is $7,000 worth. It's what, yeah, what I want, but hey.
We're gonna have that.
If we don't make up our mind on what we're gonna do.
Yes, yes. Well, that's.
This truck's gonna be gone too.
Yeah, okay. So now, then let us, first of all, we need to approve, you know, an actual, that this is what we're going to do. That we are going to be, yes.
I took the liberty of drafting a rough.
Just a minute, Sam. Did, Rich, did you have questions?
The last time I ran into Mike Malachek, he said that he could help our town, but nobody reaches out to him. Have either of you chiefs had, does he help Long Beach?
We received CCMG funding, but it's a vehicle show.
No.
Oh.
Robbie Paul.
He's our director. I mean, I ran into him, and believe me, I'm not.
We can ask him, but we need to make a decision on what we're doing. We're not gonna wait, if Mr. Malachek, yea or nay, he's gonna do something. We can't, we can't even get through to him via email, okay? Because he doesn't post an email, only a telephone or a mail. So, it's not that, I, we, I mean, it's a, we can ask him, we can talk to him, just like we can talk to anybody else. We were gonna talk to NERC, we're gonna do, you know, all this stuff. So, but I don't wanna wait for him to respond and then we make a decision.
Well, I'd say it's got a lot to determine by contacting these people. And I think if you're interested in this one truck, you get to hold a sentence, find out how long they can hold it and what we would have to do to hold it.
Yes.
And we're working on financing.
Okay.
Financing either through a bank or if it's going to be a lease purchase? If they have something for lease purchase?
You can lease purchase the vehicle, but you can't lease purchase the saw box or the potter. All looks good.
Okay.
All right, but if you need to get, so if you're purchasing, maybe all you have to do is call on 24 hours in advance if you want to do that. I'm not against having, I'm against, we are concerned about, okay, tonight, we're gonna say we're gonna buy this, you know.
It's not just, this has been a several year process, you know, doing it.
In regards to doing what you were saying, research to find out.
I'm interested. I'm just trying to, it's like Rob just said, we just pointed out, these trucks are few and far between, and we don't want to be in a situation. Our truck's not gonna last 18 months.
We're gonna talk in 18 years.
That's what Long Beach had. I'm just gonna.
What you're talking about is what's on this paper.
Yes.
Big enough to get stunned, okay? Why can't you get back with your dealer, let them know that that's the truck you're interested in and you're working on financing and see if they can hold it? That's the first thing you've got to do.
No, first thing we have to do is pass, you know, motion that we are going to do this. That's what we have to do first, okay?
So to that, to that point, I took the liberty of drafting a resolution. I will read it. A resolution to authorize the purchase of a town, of a new town plow and self-truck from Sutton Ford. Whereas Town Council of the Town Michigan Shores, Indiana, has directed the Town Road Commissioner to investigate the purchase of a new truck to replace the current truck that has numerous issues and has cost the town significant monies to repair it. The replacement truck shall be equipped with the full complement of add-on equipment to enable the road commissioner and team to keep the town roads properly clear of snow and safer traffic in the best ways. Whereas the road commissioner and staff have received four bids from dealerships in the area, and we have evaluated each bid on the price while ensuring the trucks meet all the basic requirements needed and preferred, needed and preferred equipment. And determined that the best available truck is found at Sutton Ford and is a new 2024 Ford F-550 with snow removal plow and stainless steel saw. Now therefore, it's hereby ordained and enacted by the Town Council of Town Michigan Shores, the Port County, Indiana, as follows. That the Town, that the Town Council of Town Michigan Shores authorizes the clerk treasurer to pay Sutton Ford, Madison, Illinois, the total amount due of $117,550 plus added costs to add the required safety strobe lights. Final price to be determined, but estimated to be $500. This price includes all the way sales tax that can be petitioned to refund after the sale. There will also be a value for the sale of the existing truck to be completed once the new truck is delivered. The Town Council also authorizes the clerk treasurer in order to reserve a small amount of town capital reserves to explore and utilize a lease loan financing program offered through the Indiana Bond Bank or other financial institution. Repeal provisions. All prior ordinances or resolutions will parts thereof inconsistent with any of the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Separability clause. If any section, clause, provision, or portion of this resolution be deemed to be invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, such provision shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance. Emergency enactment ineffective clause. The council hereby declares an emergency and this resolution shall be in full force in effect from and after its passage and adoption by the Town Council of the Town of Michigan Shores, County of the Port, Indiana, or as error after, as provided by the law. Passed and adopted by a majority vote of the Town Council of Town Michigan Shores, Indiana, on the 11th day of February 2025. Sam, one correction. It's got a stainless steel bed, but I believe you said it was a stainless steel saw. It's actually a polymer, salt, but polymer, saw, sprayer? Okay. It's not stainless steel, the bed for the truck is stainless steel, not a polymer.
I want to, council members, any questions on what was included in this resolution?
That sounds good to me. Refuted? We're not, it's exactly what I was looking for.
An agreement that we should, we should go forward.
How we're gonna figure it out in a couple of days.
We do have four to six weeks in order, lead time, in order for the government to do this.
Okay, Brad, any kind of recommendation for me on, you know, the steps to follow?
No, I think you're on the right path.
So, Bob and Nick, we approved this resolution tonight. It puts you in a position that is to talk with these people and be honest with them. Tell them we're figuring out the financing. So we have a hold of it, buys us some time to.
I think I, I didn't know if I forwarded to everybody by far that the returning mail from the dealer today.
How did you name it?
And I told them that, you know, we're gonna get approval tonight, pending financing. So I think the resolution, if I can send him a copy of that, he can get all the stuff ordered. We've got four to six weeks to figure out on what we're gonna do.
Okay, I didn't see any kind of emails, so we don't check that out, I didn't, you know, it's not into us. Okay, so I think that this is a good step forward, because then at least we have something, you know, to show to any of the dealers, you know, that we're looking at as well, to banks, you know, the Indiana Bond Bank and however, even, you know, so whether it's NERC, whether it's anybody else that we're approaching, right, for grants. To, you know, this is what we're doing, it's an official act, it's not like anybody, you know, whatever. In that case, then I.
We have a resolution number.
Well, John won't give us a resolution number. But I, we need to ask for a motion. We can get a number, you know, from John, but therefore, we need to have a motion, you know, to approve, you know, this and then a second and, and adopt that.
To approve?
So I'll take a motion to approve the resolution with the modifications that Bob suggested, Sam made, the description of the truck.
Can you give this? Okay, then I need a second for this.
Second.
All right, so, okay, round box moved, Sam packs and seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that is the four ayes have, and the resolution has passed. Has been approved and passed.
So John will bring us some meat on your, 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 your. Well, we can sign it. We'll have to come to that.
You can, yeah.
It's pretty rough.
Well, I mean, if you've got a coffee there, you can add whatever you need to it and then you can make clean copies, you know, and sign it, but that's okay, right? You can, okay, Brad said it's okay, so.
Yeah, you're gonna, oh, when I sign it.
Uh, you know.
They were, they were signing up the draft before the changes.
Right, so round box moved, made the motion to approve the resolution, but is the number of this resolution?
202502.
Okay, resolution with the correction made regarding naming that particular hop being made of polymer, not stainless steel. Sam packs and seconded this, and all four members present approved. Do you have two copies over there, Sam?
I will.
He's all good.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But just don't follow, I'm not gonna follow next.
Yes, this is just, this is a tool to have in hand.
I do have until the 18th to approve or deny the decals quote.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what, if you guys need anything more from me on that.
For the 18th or what?
The 18th, that's when the quote expires.
The decals.
For the decals on the truck.
The 18th of February?
Yes.
And I think you said it was 500 bucks for all vehicles?
No, 260 total for all of our vehicles.
Okay, that's fair, okay.
Is that permanent or is it something you're taking off along?
It's permanent.
Okay, because I understand we got one that you take off along and I've never seen it down a trail.
They fall off, that's why I got a permanent one.
That would probably come under the road commissioner's expenses, then, you know, that kind of what.
Right, that's something they, they can do their own expenses.
Yeah, and you can, you can do that in a, you know.
You can sort of hit that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I think that's approved in the order.
Yeah.
I need your purchase order, I need your ready for.
Are you a leave of purchase order? Yeah, okay. All right, well, this, I've got, you know, council members over here assigned, but not if they've got here. Brad, any attorney report for us?
Just some quick updates without getting into specifics on it. Got updated budget or updated totals now on the delinquencies, so now reduce those in judgment.
Okay.
It's called claims, you're talking about, those are no judgments.
Okay.
The two nuisance actions that are still pending, they'll be scheduled mostly for status in March, come out of spring. The rebuilding appeal is ongoing, I'm just keeping it up on that. The clerk finished the transcript, so the next step would be the briefing. And that would be obviously a little bit of a shock to that.
I haven't heard anything yet.
But, I mean, the transcript from the hearings is preparing, if anybody's interested in those. You can find them online. If not, I can get them, you know, to you if you want. Just one more thing on the white ditch too, because Brad mentioned. The drainage board members will be coming out, or some of them, hopefully walking property in or around that meeting. So anybody that's got homes around there, these strangers walking through their yard.
Yes, that's right. And one of them said he's planning on coming soon, or not just the day of meeting, but it's time soon to take a look, so, okay, so that's taking place. Now, any miscellaneous business? I don't have anything listed, is there anything else that needs to be brought up? Nope, okay. Communications, I've seen an email, or Bob and I have seen an email, don't remember if it's today or yesterday, and it was about the park that is on Angel. And a gentleman was talking about, you know, that road needs to be fixed up and so on and so forth. So I mean, I do agree that that condo should be fixed up and he should, could take a look at that, just that small sliver on what, you know, where they're at, you know? Angel is the next street on the entire list that we had, it's in those local reserves. But we wouldn't.
What's not in the, for different companies?
It's not included in this.
It's not really just a patch in the rest of, I understand, there's gonna be.
Are we?
I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how it works, but this is a flooding issue. Patching a road doesn't fix it.
That's right.
It needs to be patched, but just some continued.
No, I, I.
Bigger problem.
I understand that, but the way, for instance, you had to explain, under the community crossings grant, we are doing paving, not road building. So that becomes road building. If you want it to fall off, now you're talking about building. Now things can be done, you know, I guess you could do various different kind of, I guess, provide some kind of way to run it off, you know, with the signs or sort of drain better to the ground. But we have more than one spot in town that does this, you know, that floods. There's some areas on Bertrand that do it, there's something, there's some on Drain Wall, there's even on Tyro, on the newly paved section, you know, that also floods. I mean, it has an entire lake, you know, probably about 15 feet, you know, diameter, that's there until, you know, it gets to dry off. I even have a small part of it, you know, sticks out of my arse where the water was not draining. I asked them after the last bidding, and I said, that's rebuilding a road to change those. And that would be a much larger endeavor. So maybe if at any time we can get any kind of money from NERC to do that, that might be possible, but we are too small to get that kind of money. We would have to join into neighborhood communities and ask for bigger projects, you know? Even if they're not right next to us, if we join with, you know, like maybe Trail Creek, Long Beach, or somebody else, then maybe someday we can get the works, you know? And so, that much, you know, from them. So, okay, anyway, that was a communication received, just FYI. The fine that we had issued for the renting without, you know, without a permit and advertising, that fine has been paid. So the resident is going to be, I guess, applying for a permit or going through the process anyway with, I believe with the VCA. You know, she was trying to get in touch with Matt. Okay, any public comments?
I heard something, Diane. Heard this report coming, HeartSafe, that they're starting to be going in LaPorte County. LaPorte is already heart safe. Michigan City and Long Beach have joined also, but they're having a CPR class. Anybody is welcome to go.
Awesome.
On March 1st at 10:00 a.m., I believe it's at the Public Safety Building. And just give the, please, the department over there a call if you want to go. Or the police department, just give them a call.
Where in La Porte?
No, 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 in Long Beach, they're having a class.
Where is it? Okay.
Or, I'm sorry, in Long Beach are having a class.
Yes, I understand, but it's La Porte that's sponsoring, right?
Yes. And it's free of charge to anybody that would like to go.
Awesome, okay.
And then they will kind of teach you how to do it.
Okay.
And what they're doing is they're registering like the AEDs here.
Okay.
Right now, countywide, they have 400, around 450 already. So if you go do your training, you can download this thing called the Pulse Point. That your phone will go off, somebody needs an AED, if you're close, it will show you where to go to get the AED.
Oh, wow.
To get it to the scene, because when they're finding out, the faster you get the AED on it, the faster the person could come back.
So that's very interesting, thanks for letting us know, I think we'll ask Samantha to post that on our website, too, if I could, or if I could do something.
Yeah.
That sounds really good, thank you. You don't happen to know about what they do for small children? I mean, no, for an adult to work on small children?
Actually, you can go to the Health Foundation Board. I think they're having a class coming up here.
Oh, all right.
And I forgot the date, but go on there, um, the Health Foundation Board.
Right. All right, I will check.
Mark said he would send it to you, but I hope there's a class coming up for children.
Right.
I mean, for adults to learn how to do this, children seem to be-
Sounds very good, okay, but, thanks. Thank you, okay. I have a vested interest in it, so, uh, anyway, that's six of them. Any more public comments? No, public council comments?
I just want to, uh, give a little recognition to Brian Alexander. Brian's only been in the role of code enforcement officer for two or three months. And, uh, he's done a fantastic job picking up where we're needed.
Yeah.
He's a quick learner. He seems to be understanding where we're at and what we're trying to do.
Awesome, thank you, thank you, Brian. Um, okay, if there are no other comments, I am, that's the way I ask, promotion to adjourn?
The dates on the bottom.
Oh, sorry?
The dates on the bottom, the next week.
Yeah.
For those, the Town Council should be March 11th, right?
March 11th, yes. Okay, advisory plan is March 4th, town council is March 11th, VCA is gonna be March 27th. Parkour will be March 24th, and the boosters are being February 24th.
And the workshop will be in-
Oh, that will be something, that's right, we need to add that to this, okay? I will make sure we have that, the workshop. I guess we should do this as a public meeting, we won't make it, well, it's a public meeting. There is a town council meeting afterwards, but this workshop will be a public meeting. Okay, there's all, okay. All right, if you go down the line, all right. Uh, it is now, okay? 8:13, I gotta, uh, drive this thing.